Mr. Leclerc. Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Ms. Saleh.
Here.
Mr. Reiner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Here.
Ms. Tennessee Cirker.
Here.
Okay, one will do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a couple special presentations tonight. We have an update from Historic Dublin Business Association. Ms. Kocak, would you like to address counsel? And you're here in your capacity as president of HDBA.
Yes. I'm Brenda Kocak, and I'm also the president of the Historic Dublin Business Association. And first, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity and time to provide you with an update on our initiatives. We currently, our 58 independent businesses is strong, and it is our goal with the current board to build a stronger sense of community within our organization with active memberships. City staff has been meeting regularly with Heather T. Macy, HDBA Vice President, and myself, with continued updates on the Bridge Street District, as well as building a plan to continue to increase the appeal of the landscape and the safety of the walkways within the Historic District. I'm happy to say that our Jig Thursdays are continuing to build momentum and create awareness to the Historic District. Jig Thursdays take place the first Thursday of each month with different activities. Through partnering with the Dublin Visitors and Convention Bureau, we have been able to increase the Irish experience of our Jig Thursdays. We have free trolley rides with Irish sing-along music, sterling bagpipers, Irish dance lessons at the library, March through May, and we'll have an ensemble from the Dublin Community Bands playing at Bright High Square, June through September, along with many other activities. This May, we will host our second annual art stroll featuring the talent of our youth from Dublin City Schools. HDBA also organizes two charitable initiatives. In July, we are going to have our first Burger Sliter Challenge between the Historic District restaurants. That will be with the assistance of the Dublin AM Rotary. And in October, we will host our annual Chili Cook-Off with the assistance of the MOM Foundation. In December, we will be rounding off the year with holidays, featuring Mr. and Mrs. Claus and a presentation from the Columbus Zoo. And it is through our community engagement with the City of Dublin that all of this is possible, and we all want to thank you.
Well, thank you. We appreciate everything you do in the district. We all look forward to the Thursdays. It's every third Thursday?
Great, yes. The first Thursday of everyone.
First Thursday, okay, down in the district, so thank you.
Thank you.
And we also have an update, a special presentation from PERC, Parents Encouraging Responsible Choices. Ms. Harder, welcome.
I'm Kathy Harder. Do you know my address? 7825 Holliston Court in Dublin. Thank you, Mayor, and also council members. I'm Kathy Harder and President of PERC. I just wanted to come this evening just to give you another quick update and appreciation for all your help over the year. As you know, PERC is Parents Encouraging Responsible Choices, and we work throughout the school year bringing programs together for our parents so that they can get some tools and so that that helps them with some better parenting. So we've had a great year this year. Wanted to update you on what we're going to do next year. We're going to start out early, and on August 4th, we're going to have Michelle Borba come. She's a nationally-known speaker. She's been here in Hilliard before. We're partnering with a teacher group as well. They'll have her in the morning, and then the evening at 7:00, we'll be over at Kaufman High School for her presentation. We're looking forward to that. It should be a great evening. She does a great job on all-age students. She talks about from young to high school, about bullying, helping your kids, talking to your kids about drug prevention, and she should be a great speaker. We also wanted to, you know, talk to you about a new approach that we're doing. We feel it's important that our community knows about the Dublin social drinking law. And the best way that we can do that, because I think what's really nice about PERC is that we get a lot of different parents in. We have parents of young children, parents of high school children. And so what we've done is invited a police officer to come and then give about a two-minute spiel about the social drinking law. And that's been very beneficial, and we plan to continue that next year. Also, we're very grateful about using the REC Center. We appreciate that we can use the Talus Rooms, and it's been a wonderful place to use it. We also have been using the childcare. For $3 an hour, a parent can use that in the morning. We've also had students from Dublin SIO to help with the evening childcare. Childcare is very, very important, but we also felt like it's been adding up a little bit for parents who use the morning time if they're bringing in several children. So we're working with them at the REC Center to talk about these issues a little bit because we may want to even use their facility in the evening and move our times around. So, and maybe bring some student helpers along, too, that could help in the evenings as well. So we're looking forward to all of those experiences there. And last but not least, this Thursday coming up is our family night. And so we have a lot of activities happening. We have open gym over at the REC Center. Jason's Deli is giving, you know, some free kids' meals. We also, at the library, they're getting involved in having a scavenger hunt and so forth. So we're looking forward to that. So you may decide to spend time at home together for your family, fun night, or you may want to go out and you could have Tommy's Pizza and then get a discount that way. So we really appreciate everything that you do for us, and thank you for this time this evening. Thanks.
Now, we appreciate what you do for us. It's a terrific organization, and I know Rick and Amy are both involved. Would either one of you like to make any comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank you guys and thank your organization for all your work. It's amazing what you all have been able to accomplish over the years, and it's, you know, continued on. A lot of times, these organizations will start up with a class of parents, and as those students move on, you know, you find things, the enthusiasm and the passion, you know, may move on with those parents, but that's not the case with this. And I know my own experience, you know, having my kids come up, it's invaluable to have that resource. So thank you very much for all your work, and please pass that appreciation on to your folks, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also want to thank you for all your work. And as you know, we adopted this legislation, Amy, what was it, six years ago, I think? And the one thing we really wanted to do is to enhance education and awareness. And thank you so much for you and your organization, because you have helped us to, I think, do an awful lot in that regard.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, that social host idea, that's terrific.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this brings us to citizen comments. Mr. Maurer.
Your Honor and members of city government, I have two items. The first one is a very pleasant, warming one. While we are still in the grip of winter, the horticultural section of the city management has been busy already planting, and the results up where I live from the first traffic circle there on Brand Road are very warming every time I go by. So luxuriate in that. The second is this. I think you know where I live, near the traffic circle up there on Dublin and Brand. There's a piece of property just south of mine, adjoining mine. And my, as what I know is, I think the city owns that. Is that right? The city of Dublin owns that property? You know what I'm referring to?
That's correct.
Is that right? Are you at liberty to tell me what you're going to do with it?
We don't have any purpose other than what it's currently. When we acquired the property, we acquired it for the roundabout, and the rest of it will remain green space.
Well, last year, you had some sort of bird boxes out there. And I was kept awake the other day, the other night, by a lot of tractor noise out there. And I think not only was the grass cut, but all the ground seemed to have been turned over. So I'm gotten curious about what you're going to do with it.
We'll have to get back to you. I'm not aware of anything different that we're planning to do on that site.
Okay, thank you very much.
We'll give you a report on that, Mr. Maurer.
Oh, great.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. Any council member have any item they'd like to remove? Not all entertain a motion to approve. Second? Judy?
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Cirker.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Okay, we're at second reading. We need a motion to waive the council rules. Group ordinance is 12-14.
So moved.
Through 1714. We have a motion, we have a second. Judy?
Ms. Tennessee Cirker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
So, help me out here, Judy. Are we going to read each one of these, or we're just going to?
Just their names.
Just the names? Do you want to go through that for us?
Isaac D. and K. W. Penson, Kevin M. and Karen L. Klosterman, Jack M. and Sue E. McKittrick, Kentell and Linda D. Stevens, Donald P. and Cheryl L. Burns, Thomas A. and Alan E. McDowell.
Very good. We need a separate motion for that to approve.
Second.
Okay, call the roll.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Cirker.
Yes.
Do we need an emergency?
I don't think so, do we?
It says on there that it's emergency.
Right.
We are asking for an emergency so we can get the closings completed as quickly as we can.
Okay, so we need a motion. I'm moved, John moved, second?
Second. Ms. Tennessee Cirker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Okay, so we good?
Yes.
All right. So we go to ordinance 18-14? Carry on. Do you want to read the ordinance, or?
Okay. Authorizing the city manager to execute a utility easement granting American Electric Power a 10-by-15 feet easement on property owned by the City of Dublin at the northeast corner of Brand Road and Brandon Way Drive and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Ahn?
Good evening. The City of Dublin and AEP have been working to relocate an existing utility pole and right-of-way along Brand Road. Just to give you an orientation, this is the reserve area out in front of the Brandon Way subdivision. The reason for granting the easement is that you currently see this type of setup. It's called a push-pole to balance the utility lines along Brand Road. AEP has indicated to us that they can remove the second pole if the utility lines are pushed further to the north to create the proper tension along Brand Road. AEP has also sought one of these easements from the property owner immediately to the east of the city property, Gretchen Distelhorse, and Ms. Distelhorse has granted that to AEP. So it takes both easements for removal of these push poles that are adjacent to the roadway.
Okay, very good. Any discussion? Motion?
I think there's a motion to treat it as an emergency.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Cirker.
Yes.
And on the motion, yeah.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Cirker.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Good. Move on to ordinance 20-14.
Authorizing the execution of a cooperative agreement between Dublin City Schools and the City of Dublin related to the Bridge Street District and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Graceby?
As mentioned in the memo, we have had some language to clarify the process as far as the community plan and how that's our guiding factor with regard to Bridge Street, and we are asking for adoption as an emergency at tonight's meeting. And other than that, there are no additional changes from the report last meeting.
Okay, I'll move to treat it as an emergency.
Second. Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Cirker.
Yes.
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes. We do have a speaker on this, Mr. Maurer, before we go on with the final motion.
Because the police outside told me I've got a pinched nerve. And I guess the only way to get rid of it is to get a chiropractor to do a whiplash on you, right? Is that the way it works? Anyhow, I understand the process here of the city having the city having the absolute control over managing the Dublin Bridge Street enterprise, with which, incidentally, I have suddenly become very interested. I have a question about the issue here about the Dublin school system, the concerns, and I I guess it's financial, but behind the finances are probably objectives. And I'm wondering whether the city school system has objectives like educational or cultural components in the way of buildings or in the way of personnel? That would be my general question.
Well, I think it's pretty safe to say that their values and their goals relate to the education of the students within the City of Dublin and their school district. So I'm not sure what the question is other than that.
Oh, you didn't understand my question other than that. The question was, when I was reading through the whole process here, it was all financial. But money stands for objectives, and I was wondering whether the school system has any particular, specific objectives in mind, such as buildings or such as?
Well, part of the payments that the city will be making to the school district, their intended purpose at this point in time is for technology needs and technology improvements.
Okay, in the schools.
In all their schools.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We can vote on the ordinance.
Okay, I want to vote on the ordinance.
Okay. Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Cirker.
Yes.
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
And thanks, Marsha, and your staff and everybody for moving us through this process. We appreciate it. Okay, that'll bring us to ordinance 21-14. Judy?
Resoning approximately 4.6 acres located on the east side of Kaufman Road, north of Forest Run Drive, at the current stub of Nature Drive from our rural district to our two limited suburban residential districts, and approving a preliminary plat to create four residential lots requiring a preliminary plat variance to the required right-of-way and pavement widths.
I'll introduce it.
Ms. Hsu Sa?
Good evening. This is ordinance 2114 for a rezoning of a small parcel, 4.6 acres. The site is outlined in yellow. It's on the east side of Kaufman Road and just north of Nature Drive, north of the Woods of Indian Run subdivision. And we're looking at the western portion of a six and some change acre lot that was recently, that that portion outlined in yellow was recently annexed into the city. And the portion that has frontage on Kaufman Road remains in Washington Township. The surrounding zoning to the south is PUD in the Woods of Indian Run, and then we have some larger lot residential in Washington Township to the north. The Arlington subdivision, PUD as well, and then Hemingway Village, mixture of R4 and R2. The proposal is to zone this 4.6 acres to R2, the limited suburban residential district. And in this district, the permitted uses are residential, so it fits well within the surrounding neighborhoods, and it also meets all the zoning requirements for this district. In a little bit of detail, the requirement for the minimum lot size within the R2 district is 20,000 square feet. You can see there the lots range in size from 20,000 square feet, Lot 4, which is the smallest, to just over 80,000 square feet, which is Lot 3. The applicant is proposing to extend Nature Drive north to access these lots. They all have the required frontage on public right-of-way. And since Nature Drive was developed in a planned unit development district, there was a permission made to allow for 50 feet of right-of-way, and the pavement width is also slightly smaller than what the subdivision regulations require. Hence, the approval of this preliminary plat would include a variance to the width of the right-of-way and the width of the pavement. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of that, and staff is supportive of that as well as we are extending an existing street. So we want to keep it in line with what is existing there. The applicant on the south side of Lots 1 and 3 has also proposed a tree preservation zone so that those trees there along the property line would be preserved and create a natural buffer there against those existing residences. Here is what the plat looks like on paper, four lots, pretty simple. The Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as city council, would see it again when it comes to final plat. And there is also a small bio-retention basin planned on Lot 3 for their stormwater management. And the expectation is that there would be a small association of those four lots that would take care of the maintenance of that. So with that, Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as staff, are recommending approval of this ordinance at the next meeting, as well as the preliminary plat that's part of that. And I'm here for any questions, and the applicant and their representative are here as well.
Claudia, I do have one question. What's the respect to this association you made reference to? How will that work? Will this be forced funding?
It will.
I want to see these people come back in five years and say, hey, we ran out of money. City, please help.
I think I'm going to hand this over to Jack, but it's forced and funded as far as I understand it. But the applicant has way more experience in those matters, I think.
You would like to address that? Guess I'd be interested to know how you arrived at whatever number you arrived at.
Good evening, council members. Jack Reynolds, Smith &amp; Hale, 37 West Broad Street, Columbus, Ohio. Yes, this will be a force-funded homeowners' association to take care of the bio-swell. We've had some discussion with staff in terms of whether the bio-swell should be in an easement or on the owner's lot, and we will work that out as we go through the final plating process. And as Claudia indicated, we have been working with the properties, the homeowners' association to the south of us, and we've agreed that we will do deed restrictions that mimic theirs so that we have some commonality. And ultimately, we've agreed that there will be an agreement between the two homeownerships, home associations, that will fund some of the entryway features and some of the activities in the woods at Indian Runs. We will participate in that association to help defray some of the costs because we will use their roadway, their entrance way to get into our subdivision. And again, you all have seen this. I was in front of you in September for the service resolution and then the acceptance. And so this is what we told you we'd be doing, and here it is.
Very good.
I just have a couple quick questions. Is the bio-retention, is that the reason why that Lot 3 is so large compared to the other lots?
The gentleman that is doing the development, that is his lot.
I see.
And he wanted a large lot.
Okay. And I guess, this is just an editorial comment, that I am disappointed that the residents in front of it, though, didn't make application to become part of the City of Dublin because now we have part of what was their property, of course, now going to be in the City of Dublin, and their property and the one north of them, of course, still in Washington Township.
With annexation, you have to agree to it to be annexed, and he simply wanted to stay in the unincorporated area.
Thank you.
I just want to follow up on the gateway features. You say you're going to share the cost with the neighborhood to the south. Is that in writing? Is that in the?
It will be, yes.
Is it in the deed restrictions or all of the above?
They came to us, and again, with the understanding that we're utilizing their entryway and their drive into it, they simply asked if we wouldn't help to defray some of the costs. And so we said that we would. We went to an attorney who does deed restrictions, and, you know, he recommended that we do kind of an agreement between the two entities to work out what cost should be on a yearly basis.
Yeah, Claudia, it's been a while. Didn't we also put that in the PUD as well, in the text? Because those deed restrictions only last for X number of years. And at least my thought was, in the text, that goes on for a longer time, does it not? Or could theoretically?
It would, it could theoretically. Since they're zoning this to a standard district, we won't have that opportunity.
Yeah. I'd kind of like to see it also in the PUD as a condition that it's listed there, just so that this goes on for a long time. And we're seeing a lot of neighborhoods now, because of the economy and like, that's coming to us through grants and like, to maintain their gateways. And that's all well and good, and fully understand that. But, you know, right out of the chute, I'd kind of like to just, let's get that in writing.
Well, let me make a point. It's not our gateway. It's the Woods at Indian Runs gateway.
Entrance.
Oh.
So it's, it's, it's.
They're going to share the cost.
It's not us.
Okay.
We've agreed to come down and help them with theirs.
Okay, so you're just being nice guys?
We're just being nice guys.
Okay, okay.
Claudia, will there be anything in writing that we can hang our hats on before we vote on this on April 28th with respect to the homeowners' association?
We were discussing to have a review of those deed restrictions prior to the final plat getting filed because there would still be another approval step that's forthcoming.
It would seem to be. I mean, right by your entryway there, I mean, you would own that land, would you not?
It's not, again, we're not going to put an entry feature on our four lots. We're talking about an entry feature that's already existing over on the Woods at Indian Runs facility.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's already there.
They're accessing through that stub road that was there that's not going to go through.
I know, I know.
We're just, we're buying into the thought that we want to be helpful with our neighbors, and we do drive in and out of their streets.
I appreciate that, but I'd like to see what ideas staff can come up with just to make sure that your good words continue on after you retire and go to Florida.
Okay, Tim?
Yeah, I just want to be clear regarding whose responsibility it will be to maintain the bio-retention basin. That's going to be the residents' responsibility?
Our residents, the four.
Those four lots.
Those four lots will be responsible for the maintenance of the bio-swell.
And that'll be in their homeowner's association?
It will be in their home, their deed restrictions for their maintenance, and that will be funded through their homeowners' association.
And do we have a good understanding, because I don't, you know, with respect to the maintenance required for, you know, such a facility? I mean, I guess one of my concerns is, you know, usually we have, you know, the financial burden spread across, you know, a much larger group of residents. And here, there are just four.
We will have the folks from EMHNT here next time, but we asked that question. This will be a very low-maintenance type of bio-swell in terms of the upkeep and maintenance. It'll primarily be an area that will probably be mowed, and that's about the size of it. You know, the water will go down, collect in it, and then release into the creek, which is right nearby. But again, I will talk with EMHNT and make sure that we have an understanding as to what the yearly cost will be of the maintenance. But we did ask that question, and they didn't think there would be a lot of cost with its maintenance.
I think when you say the word bio, it has a connotation that may not seem user-friendly.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to get the cat tails that, you know, you typically think of with the bio-swell. Given, there was some discussion about whether it could hook into the existing stormwater system, but given the fact that this is developing at this point in time under the EPA rules and regulations about sedimentation, so we couldn't hook into the existing stormwater that's in the woods, we had to come up with this. And we were assured that since there's only, really, four lots, and it's only servicing that portion of the right-of-way, there's very little water that's going to run into the bio-swell. Because there are catch basins right up at the woods where it comes in on nature drive to take care of their stormwater. So you're looking at that short little run of street, which will actually bring the water down to the bio-swell. So it's not an awful lot of area that's going to be recovered.
Thanks.
Anything else?
No, I guess I'd just like our staff to weigh in on that and make sure, because we want to make sure that in perpetuity that's taken care of properly.
Definitely.
Very good. Okay, then we'll have the second reading of this public hearing, April twenty-eighth.
And just to give you an update, Mr. Hale was in the office last week on a cane, moving very rapidly. He even did a little jig for us. So.
Terrific.
He's back at it, and he will be up and around.
So their best wishes to him, that's good to hear. Okay, we need a motion to waive the council rules to introduce Resolution twenty-five dash fourteen through twenty-nine fourteen together.
So moved.
Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Cirker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Lackleyder?
Do you want to read the property owners' names, addresses, and the record, please?
Okay. Daryl L. and Victoria L. Cramblett, three five-five South High Street. Mohammed Jioth and Esther Lee Amar, sixty-one forty-three Dublin Road. Paul E. Newell, Jr., fifteen Grandview Drive. Elizabeth Miller, three sixty-seven South High Street. Adam P. Johnson, fifty-eight fifty-one Dublin Road.
Very good. On the motion?
Hold, don't we need?
Does report?
No, you have a staff report.
I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Highlighted up on the screen are the five parcels that are before you tonight with resolutions for intent to appropriate. There's a total of twenty-one parcels in this project for the Dublin Road South Shared Use Path Phase Three. These five, we've had various conversations or attempts to contact property owners and believe this is the next appropriate step.
Any other questions? Anybody? Judy?
Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Cirker?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lackleyder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution thirty dash fourteen.
Appointing a member to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Introduce that, and I guess I'll.
Turn it over to the Administrative Committee Chair.
Yeah, well, after a long and thorough search, we've come to the conclusion the best candidate for that would be to appoint a council rep. We had one for several years, I think that did a lot of good. It brought the commission, I think, a little closer to council, vice versa. And it's the preference to go back in that direction. So we would like to put Amy Salee, who has graciously volunteered, and I know her some flowers and some dinner. But aside of that, thank you for taking one for the team.
She's going to cost you more than flowers and dinner.
Several dinners, yeah.
Probably after every meeting, I'm sure. Amy, thank you so much for taking one for the team, so to speak. I think this is a good choice, and I think we'll see a lot of benefits.
I think we're all very much in agreement on this, we're looking forward to having you fulfill that role, and we thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity, I'm actually really looking forward to it. I know it's a lot of time, but that's really where my heart and soul is with respect to community services, all about planning. And so I'm excited to get started.
Well, if that's a motion, I'll second it.
It was a motion.
Yep. There is a second, Judy?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Tennessee Cirker?
Yes.
Ms. Saley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Lackleyder?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, do I have to swear her in, I think? We won't do it today, but I think we do.
She'll need to be sworn in at the regular meeting.
I need to be sworn in, yeah.
Which is fine.
See you Thursday.
Okay, we have, under other, we have a presentation on the Riverside Drive State Route one sixty-one intersection improvements.
Yeah, this is one we had planned to have scheduled, or the simulation for this evening. We have the simulation finished, we have videotaped information that narrates the simulation, and that is not completed as of yet. We'll have it completed before the end of this week. So what we would like to do is, we have scheduled, or there should be scheduled for next Monday evening, another workshop to talk about transportation issues, including the streetscape update that we talked about on April seventh, and then also the update of the engineering study that related to some of the phasing of infrastructure projects. So we would like to show the simulation with the completed video at that time, and then it will be out on our website after that. I think it makes it easier to understand and follow.
We have a work session a week from tonight?
We don't have that on our calendar.
Yeah, we don't have that on our calendar. You'll be here by yourself.
I'm all right with it, but.
Okay. I mean, we thought, and that must have been a confusion on our part, that the open Mondays, we would block and schedule as workshops, and then if we didn't have them, we would cancel them.
We did say that at one time.
I thought you said as needed, we would do those on our, that they wouldn't just be automatically a work session.
Well, we can. Like to do it, so what's the pleasure of council?
What's everybody look like on the calendar? Is that something we can do, or?
I can do it.
I can do it.
Well, what time and for how long?
We could start at six-thirty, if that works, and probably, I mean, it would be no more than two hours, I would anticipate.
And that's the twenty-first?
Correct.
Twenty-first at six-thirty.
Okay.
Everybody good with that? Okay, so be it. All right, then we'll move on to staff comments.
Just a couple of things to highlight that were in the packet under the extra packet, the items of interest. We had some updated on the fact that we have a time-lapse camera for the construction of Emerald Parkway, and that will be out on the website, so we'll have that available. And then also, the Holder Wright property, the archaeological dig, we'll be doing some additional work on that site. And the residents will be notified prior to the initiation of that. And I think that's probably all we have tonight.
Very good.
Marsha, I've got a question with regard to that. I know that that site has been excavated a number of times, but if something is found, who is the owner of it?
Right now, we have some mechanisms set up where we were looking at the cataloging, and then also holding on to the property as far as the actual ownership, I'll let Fred address that.
The city retains ownership of any and all things that may be. Yeah, LSU will help in the cataloging, as well as the Ohio Historical Society. But everything, though, belongs to the city, though.
They did this earlier, they did one last year?
Yeah, we did last, the month of May last year.
Did we catalog anything or find anything?
Yeah, not, there was, the big thing last year was, prior to last year, the oldest evidence of humans being on this site was around four thousand years ago. They found a part of a projectile last year that was dated ten to fourteen thousand years ago. So there's been a lot, there's been a long history of Dublin residents.
Bradley Lepper had an article in the Dispatch about that.
So it'll be, and we're kind of working, again, this year on the south side of the creek in the area that at some point in time will be developed, so concentrating on the unprotected area.
Thank you, Fred. Okay, I'm not aware of any committee reports. We've heard from admin, any other committee reports? If not, we'll move on to roundtable. Craig?
I just saw in our packet that Jan Rosansky was named the grand marshal for the Independence Day Parade and related events. I can't think of a more worthy Dublin citizen, congratulations to Jan, that is all.
Amy?
I don't have anything. I guess with regard to the Planning Commission, my first meeting will be May eighth? No.
Thursday.
Thursday is the meeting.
This is Thursday, yeah, but I can't attend on Thursday, so unfortunately.
So I don't have to be there to swear you in?
No, no, so that's what I'm saying, well, so for staffs, and I'm, I'll need to meet with you guys about iPads and all that. Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Very good, Mary Lee.
Had a Morpsey Board Meeting last Thursday, and they also was a, they handed out the Fair Housing brochure, which, as you may be aware, may not be, the Columbus Urban League is the designated organization in this region to ensure that the Fair Housing Act is implemented properly. So if anyone has a complaint, that's where they would file their complaint, or with the Civil Rights Commission. And I'll leave this with Judy for anybody's interest in reading it. I had a question about Perk, and this would be something that I guess staff would need to follow up on. That she indicated that the childcare cost was of concern to those attending. And I guess I'm a little concerned about what is it we would be negotiating with them over other groups that use the childcare? So I think that has to be taken into consideration if there are other groups that, you know, partake of that resource available. Also, a concern I have is that she indicated that high school students would begin working in the childcare. And there are standards that are required in childcare, I assume that we're already meeting those, and that that would be necessary to maintain, regardless of whose children are there. And also, who's going to be providing the training to the high school students? How is that going to be paid for, et cetera? I'm not opposed to it, but there are qualifications, you just can't have Amy and I come this week, and Mike and John come next week, and, you know, this kind of thing. It has to be some level of consistency. Also, this is old, but the CSAC was in February, our minutes. And I'm wondering, council members, and Rick, since you're in charge of administrative team, I just happened to notice there were four people absent that we've appointed. I didn't take the time, frankly, to go back and see which one of those four, if any, were actually going off in March, and so they just went off earlier. But I think we might want to talk to administrative team about taking turns on this, but calling people when we see minutes. And it's kind of bad to have minutes two months ago in our packet. And I'm wondering if there's any way that we could get speeded up minutes, or at least be told who was present and not present, even if we didn't have the full minutes. So that we could do a follow-up.
Mary Lee, that night, you know, I was there to present the code of conduct, and only three showed up, including the chair didn't show up. And the chair never followed up with a phone call to me and the like, but.
You didn't have a quorum, did you?
No, they did not. And that's what precipitated all of us, it was a recommendation of the admin committee, which was followed through by council, to add five more people, who I believe will be, you know, very vibrant and excited about going forward. And actually, John was there last week, he swore the folks in, and went through a series of projects, which have been coordinated with Michelle. My sentiment is that now with more projects, the expectation is that they will be showing up, and is sharing with me who does show up. So I'm watching it very closely, and I think they've all been put on notice, particularly with the code of conduct, that either show up or, you know, I'm sorry, because we have so many people, I mean, we interviewed over thirty, and many of them were very qualified and very interested in serving the community.
Right.
So if one's schedule does not allow for that, then, you know, we fully understand. But, you know, we do have a lot of other people, so I think we're on top of it, and keep everybody posted.
And of course, we've talked about this before, but really, the importance and interest of people is to be interactive in these meetings, and not just hear staff tell what their activities have been. So the agendas need to be structured in a way that we're really getting constructive dialogue going, that these people feel like they're really, there's a reason for them to be there, rather than just hearing, you know, the report back from staff. I'm not saying that that was true of this meeting, that soccer was the topic in this meeting, so that might have.
Our favorite topic, yeah.
Yes.
Again, I think they're going to have some projects, I don't think I know, and I think we'll see a little different.
Right, great. And then the last thing I, is more of a question, the chief isn't here tonight, but I have actually had several people come forward to me asking about the community rumor mill, of course, and I'm not close to schools that much anymore, having not had a student in them for a while, that there's a lot of discussion among the kids, at least, and some families, that there is a lot of heroin in our district. And I'm wondering what our police are finding, and what different kind of programs, since we do have police officers in the school district, what are we doing differently? I think we're still, I don't know if they still have DARE, I think they still have DARE there, but that, obviously, isn't working with this problem. We know it's an epidemic, really, in Ohio, and we know that. And it sounds as though, what people are bringing to me anyway, that we're not immune to this issue here in this community.
Yeah, and I think that's true, and we have school resource officers that are located in the school. And part of the reason we have that is to get good information on what's going on in the district and with the kids. So we'll get additional information back to you on any updates that we have related to that issue.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Mary Lee. Tim?
Yeah, thank you. Last Thursday, together with council members, Greg Peterson and Rick Gerber attended the Spring Civic Association meeting that was held at the Justice Center, and together with many of the representatives of the various homeowners' association, had an opportunity to tour the new police firing range in the lower level of the Justice Center. So in light of all the discussion that we had on council, it was a nice opportunity to see that firsthand. And, you know, it's, you know, we do this in so many different ways, but this is just one more example of, you know, giving the community, you know, the opportunity to see a facility like this that, you know, most people wouldn't have the opportunity to see. So anyway, you know, and it looks like it turned out very well, and that they're happy with it. And so anyway, appreciate that opportunity. And by the way, I thought there was a very good turnout for the homeowners' association. So thank you, that's all.
Very good, John.
Well, I had the, the Community Relations Group had a chance to go in and swear in the new CSAC members, and there's a lot of good news, a lot of excitement. I think you've chosen some very intellectually stimulating people that are very positive about getting things done. So it was a rather exciting meeting. I, oh, I'll give you a report on ten or twelve ideas that we presented to them, that they might engage themselves in, telling them that they could execute all ten, twelve, or none of them, but just so that they come up with some ideas that would benefit the health, safety, welfare, and quality of life of the community. And I think they're really excited, they wanted me to, and I said, you know, you're not really a study group anymore, we're really expecting you to sort of nosh your way through the facts of these different topics, come up with a program, report back to council, see if we're interested in them, or if the community at large is interested in them, and see if we are willing to fund them. So they're real excited about the opportunity, they're moving from a more passive study group to a more active group. So they wanted me to thank council for that opportunity to be in that particular situation, so they're very excited. So I think we got a good group, and I think they're going to come up with a lot of wonderful ideas. And we're going to see some major improvements all around the community.
Thanks for your work on that, getting everybody fired up, I heard good reports on the meeting, so.
Thank you.
Look forward to that, very good.
Thank you.
Rick?
Yeah, just a couple of things, and Tim's right. Tim, Greg, and I, myself, we attended the Civic Association Leadership Meeting last Thursday. And you're right, Tim, I think there were over eighty-plus resident leaders present, and, I mean, the room was packed. In fact, it was so packed that over to the Hall of Justice, it was difficult to find a parking spot. Some of us had to go around the back into the authorized area with the police, but very well attended. Couple of things, the postings for the magistrate and records commissions, those are out, so admin committee here in probably the next couple of weeks will have to be an opportunity to interview some people, we'll figure out a date. Also, the reception event for board and commission members, which is set for May fourteenth, I think everybody has seen that, more to come. And also, I need some help on April twenty-fourth, I'm going to be out of town, and that's the first night for BZA to swear in those folks. Mary Lee or Greg, as part of the admin committee, either one of you would be available for that. Just text me or email, and if not, we'll see who else we can find. They meet at six-thirty. It takes, you know, five, ten minutes, not long at all.
Don't we have Judy send a note around, and then if they can't cover, we'll find somebody that can?
And the other thing I saw on our calendar, lastly, Leadership Dublin Discussion Panel next Tuesday night. And that's in the past where they would meet with us for dinner over at the Rec Center and ask us questions and the like. So I guess the event's changing a little bit, but it was always one of my favorite meets and dinner, and that's next Tuesday. It's from six o'clock to eight forty-five at the Chamber. I think Ann sent a memo, or, I'm sorry, an email out Friday, I'm not sure, Thursday or Friday last week?
Yeah, what day is that again?
That's April twenty-second.
Twenty-second, which is a Tuesday.
So a week from tomorrow.
Great.
That's all I have.
Very good. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, while you all were at the Civic Association meeting, Tim and John was there, Greg, rather, and Rick, I had the distinct honor of meeting with all the former grand marshals for the Fourth of July celebration. And it's my privilege to announce Jan Rosansky was named grand marshal for the city of Dublin's Independence Day Celebration this coming Fourth of July. So we made the phone call. He was very excited and looking forward to being involved and having all his grandchildren on the float and so forth. So we'll look forward to that, that event. I was wondering, I didn't get a chance to get down there. I meant to. The town pump installation was scheduled for, was it last? Has anybody seen it?
It's being worked on.
It's being worked on. I know we had some really bad weather. I don't know if that rained us out of there, but it is, it's underway?
Thursday's the big day. There'll be prep work tomorrow, and on Thursday, the bronze will be arriving.
And so do you have any idea about what time that will be?
It will take several hours to install it.
So sometime around noon, afternoon?
I would say after 11 o'clock, the bronze will be hopefully onsite between 11 and noon.
Terrific.
Are we going to have a dedication ceremony to follow?
It'll be scheduled.
The DAC has set one for June 5th in conjunction with JIG Thursday.
Very good. Thank you. And then I know some of you will be able to attend the annual cherry blossom luncheon at Hidaka USA. So you might want to take a look at your calendars and be there. It's a great event. And with that, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.